Have us unmuted just so everyone knows we're ready to go whenever.
Okay, we'll call to order the planning commission meeting of Wednesday, April 2nd, 2025. Roll call. Katie Maxwell.
Here.
Chuck Howard.
Here.
Canceling maker. Jefferson Litch. Vice Chair Ursula Kruzelebi.
Here.
Chair Cindy Olfman.
Here.
And can we have a motion to approve the agenda that's written or if we have any changes or additions?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
All those in favor? Yay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Now the swearing in of the alternate of Judy Murphy. Raise your hand. You will.
I, Judy Murphy, solemnly declare that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Idaho Springs, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of planning commission alternate member to the city of Idaho Springs upon which I'm about to enter.
I, Judy Murphy, do solemnly declare and affirm that I will support and uphold the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado, and the laws and ordinances of the city of Idaho Springs, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of planning commission alternate member for the city of Idaho Springs upon which I am about to enter.
Great, thank you. Do you autograph that?
We do.
Yes, please. That will be to.
We will.
May you all succeed. Hey, welcome Judy. I'll go on to the next item. Public comment. Do we have anybody signed up or anybody on the Zoom login?
There is no one.
Nobody signed up. Okay, so no public comment. Conflict of interest? Any conflict of interest within the commission? No conflict of interest. Interest. Next is approval of the minutes and therefore the minutes on March 5th, 2025. Motion to approve the minutes?
I know. You pull it and you go boom down. I think it's town all the way now.
Okay, motion?
I hope that we approve the minutes of March 5th, 2025.
I'll second.
No questions.
Any corrections, changes? I didn't find anything. Okay, all in favor say yay.
Yay.
Opposed? Voting carries. Hey, general updates?
I put a number of updates in the report, so I won't linger too long on any of those. We'll just mention that there's a couple of upcoming community meetings on April 10th and April 17th at Yards and at Tommyknocker that are scheduled by the visiting community motions board. And so because of those, I've pushed back our comp plan kickoff meeting until April 30th because I don't want people to get too much meeting fatigue. But I'm going to do a little plug at those community meetings. So it'll kind of be a soft launch. The other thing I will mention that's kind of a interesting news is about the mountain park and the cable car. The mountain park has been closed since January 1st for wildlife, but it was set to open yesterday, but because of heavy construction currently happening on the gondola piers and footers foundations, the city and COBA and Argo got together and said it's unsafe to open. So anyway, they're pouring footers right now. They're like pointy beavs. It's crazy. And then that's our applicant.
Okay.
Anyway, so we're anticipating that all to be finished like late May and there will be. and there will be a few helicopter flights, or a lot of helicopter flights in May and April, where they're flying in the concrete, like one cubic yard at a time for all the footers, and then they're flying in like big towers and all that, so just kind of a update to say that that's coming, and so there's a lot going on in that area.
It's pretty cool to see when you watch the flight towers and stuff. Yep.
Well, you'll be able to see it from almost anywhere in town, so.
I see it directly out my window. Straight across. You do too, yeah. You can see this way.
Yeah, so other than that, I don't have, you know, just a bunch of other updates in that report, but that's it for me.
Okay, to me it looks like a lot going on. I'd like this. Yeah.
Yeah, I think in the future I'll just kind of, because I put it together something like that for like once a month for council, so I'm just gonna kind of keep it that format going forward, which is kind of nice.
Yep, I didn't have any questions, except for the update on the park, as I said, March 31st.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that was only in the last few days that they kind of said it's they had talked about like, could we open the trails like on the weekends, but when you look at some of the trails up there, there's like dirt and rock everywhere. Some of the bike trails and hiking trails are still being under construction at the moment, so kind of a good opportunity for them to work without, I'll look around. But once they're like flying all that stuff, they'll have, and the helicopters in the park, they can't be in there either, so. That's good.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Dylan? I was glad to hear you. Okay. Now on to new business. We'll have a public hearing. Okay, the Planning Commission is required to conduct a hearing for the consideration of a conditional use permit request for employee rafting submitted by applicant Duke Bradford of ABA Rafting and Zip Line. Commission will decide to either recommend approval or disapproval during tonight's meeting. This is a formal public meeting. We will require testimony to be given under oath. We will not follow any formal rules of evidence. If there is a question about the admissibility of evidence or testimony, I will make a ruling of that as chair. After I open the meeting, I will invite city staff to give a presentation. Then the applicant or property owner interested parties will be invited to present evidence and/or testimony. Then members of the public will be invited to give evidence and testimony. City staff and the applicant or property owner interested parties may respond to public testimony. Finally, the applicant or property owner interested party will give will be given the opportunity to have the last word on the matter raised during the public hearing. Throughout this process, commissioners may ask questions. Excuse me. After I close the public hearing, the commission will begin its deliberation and make our decision. We will do this by motion. A suggested motion is in the staff report. If we cannot reach a decision tonight, we could also continue one or both matters. Do we have any questions on the process? Okay, we'll open the public hearing, 6:08. We'll start with Stafford Park.
Sure, yeah, thanks. I will give a brief presentation that our applicant Duke Bradford is here remotely to give testimony and answer any questions as well. Just as a disclaimer at the beginning, we've done this a couple times in the last year. We did have first reading with council back on the 24th of March because of the fact that for any ordinance, you have to do two meeting, like first reading, then the second reading. Second reading is when public hearing occurs with council, so council has not reviewed the application at all. They just for timing did first reading already, so I know that happened once last year, and there's a lot of confusion about that, but anything that we recommend tonight, the ordinance essentially will be changed and modified to reflect anything that's suggested tonight, so. Putting that there first, but so this people are probably generally familiar with because we had almost an identical request last year for a conditional use permit to allow employee camping at 95 East Idaho Springs Road. It's directly west of the ballfields up that hill near the power lines. They operated ABA Rafting and Zip Line, Mr. Bradford's company, operated there last year, and we received very few comments of any issue whatsoever during this year's referral process, and there were no complaints during the season last year, which was very positive. Talking with the fire chief, he really didn't have any you know, he didn't even go up to the property, you know, there were really any EMS calls, just a couple of very minor things for PD that had been mentioned, but basically everyone we referred this to said it was more successful than they thought it would be. So this request is to continue the use, essentially. It's a new application, but continue use for 2025 and 2026 rafting seasons. Last year we had talked about, well, you know, this is a one-year trial. After that, let's kind of push forward with like a permanent solution, and I think Duke can speak to this a little bit more in his section, but it sounds like because of there's the moving parts of he doesn't own the property, where he's just leasing it from the owner, all and you know, kind of complications that come along with that. They weren't yet at a place where they could kind of figure out all those permanent solutions, which is why they're back for another CUP to house employees during the rafting season. So, looking at kind of changes from last year, last year that they're proposing more kind of waste disposal, proposing additional toilet portable toilets up there, but they are still proposing portable toilets, and still proposing water tank. They're also proposing some improvements to access. Last year there were some concerns. I think there's generally just some current concerns from the general public about people going under that underpass and then going up and down, and that's really not a access through road. It's really just one, you know, like a one-lane trail, a spur of the greenway, and so the applicant has agreed to work on better solutions for blocking access for vehicles through that space west of the property.
I thought we had one of those movable cylinder type things.
We actually do not. We may have at some point, but now there's not like a bollard, there's not a gate, there's really nothing there, and so you do see more frequently than you'd expect cars like going under, especially like it's busy with like traffic on Colorado, people sneak through, and so it's not like necessarily an issue with campers. It's kind of just an issue that needs to be addressed in general. Looking at criteria for approval, there's, there's three, you know. Does it conform to all requirements of the article and other development regulations, standards, or requirements adopted? This is almost the same as last year. When you look at it generally complies, but the same issue does last year sort of come up. They're farther away from water and sewer lines to be able to accommodate the use, so they can't just easily connect to those facilities, so they proposed to truck in potable water, have it in the tank, also to provide onsite portable toilets. We talked about it this last year. The other thing they have is rec passes, with the rec center, so folks can shower and use toilets and bring water and all that there. Last year we talked about, well, what's the permanent solution, and I think you'll see in this application, there's not a proposal for that yet. I think long-term, this would not be a permanent solution, of course, portable toilets and things like that, but for another season or two, given there was no issues last year, it seems like a reasonable compromise to be able to allow that use to continue with that as the temporary solution. As long as it's well-maintained like it was last year. The other thing that the applicant has talked about is managing waste better because I guess there was some some self-identified trash issues with bears and things like that coming in, so I think they have a better plan in place for storage of food and waste and the like. Going into access parking, the access, which we've talked about saying last year, the access is narrower than we would allow for permanent use. However, since again, this is temporary, the fire authority has said this is sufficient to respond to calls. EMS has said the same thing. Parking, they have more than enough parking spaces. They're currently not paved, but in long-term, we would require that as well. That's the same as last year as well. Last year we determined there's a kind of suitable trade-off for temporary use. The determination here is, you know, for two more years, would we want to see paving, I guess. Otherwise, the other key thing that I wanted to bring up here was about wildfire risk. They have said that they simply will not have, allow campfires up there. There will just be cooking stoves and things like that. So given all of that, we kind of discussed the issues, given that we didn't have issues last year, it seems reasonable to allow it to continue for another year and then we be then as you'll see in the conditions, we mentioned it being revisited at some point after this season to make sure there weren't issues or things that need to be changed, and then if we're okay with the use again, let it happen in 2026 as well, and then in the interim be working on long-term solutions. Talking about the comprehensive plan, it seems like this could meet comprehensive plan elements. It does provide a housing solution, even if it's a temporary one. People are only on-site for a couple months of the year. This is sort of a nice way to be able to keep employees of this business in a monitored area, controlled area, and achieve that sort of temporary need for housing for those folks. Talking about impacts to adjacent properties, the big impacts would be on the park, Ballfield Park and the rec district programming. We didn't hear any comments from the rec district or from the forest service or any other referrals about issues of them not interacting well. It sounded like things went pretty well last year in that respect as well. And so as far as impacts on neighbors, the big impact would still just be there's traffic going through the park site, and I think it's important to note, this season especially, traffic-related impacts will probably be bigger on the employee camping than vice versa because we're gonna be starting construction on Ballfield Park, Skate Park, and all that, some waterline construction and things like that, so this area is going to be quite highly impacted this season, which will have some impacts on. So anyway, that sort of is unrelated to this application, but we don't anticipate any major impact similar to last year. Like I said, it was referred to PD, fire authority, the rec district, EMS, and the only issue that came up was from Chief Bucik. He had mentioned that that issue with people driving down the bike path, which I think this application with the conditions addresses, he also was a little concerned about the two-year agreement, but the condition number 16, which is the final condition, would state that before operations commence in 2026, the applicant shall come back for a meeting with us, sort of for a compliance review, make sure that compliance was continues to be met. It wouldn't be a formal public hearing, but as with any conditional use permit, if folks aren't compliant with the CUP, it could be revoked, so that would be an opportunity to revisit it without forcing the applicant to go back through the full process. With that, we're recommending as staff approval for the two seasons with the 16 conditions that are included in the report, and that's it for me.
Okay. Applicant press presentation?
Hi guys. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Yes, yeah, yes, thank you. Dylan, thank you so much for that presentation. Commission, thanks for having us. Have me.
Wonder needs you to, yeah.
Yeah, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, it's Duke Bradford, and we're at 431 Chicago Creek Road, Idaho Springs.
You swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thanks for having me back again. As I think the commission might remember, last time we were in front of you, it was a new campground, and obviously the goal still remains. We're just trying to take that group of that migratory workforce that comes during the summer for the rafting season and put them in a place that's a centralized location that we can basically make sure they have bathrooms, organize trash, so that they're not camping throughout the community. So that was the objective. I think it went well, you know. It was, it was tiring, to be honest, to look after your staff, you know, during the day and then, of course, at night. But, but I think it really went well. I think it worked. I think we did get some people in that, and we were less of a burden on the community in that regard. So I think what we'd like to do here is extend for two years, and one of the reasons we want to do that is the ownership is going through some changes, and so they're not really ready to look at the zoning. We obviously would like to zone this a little differently. In the future, we'd like to work with the current ownership. We'd like to also work with the town, maybe to expand parking down there by the ballparks and make that available, and I think ownership is up for that, but they're just not up for that until they settle some things internally. So that's what's kind of the delays about as far as the zoning. Dylan and I have discussed it. I think between, this would be the last time we'd be in front of you for a continuation without getting this properly zoned and kind of moving forward, but well, we, you know, we would appreciate the consideration to extend here for a couple years and get this, this property in a good place. And that's about all I have. Any questions?
No, we'll come back to questions. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Do we have anybody signed up for public comments? Nobody here?
There's no one online, so.
And nobody online?
Nope, no one, no one signed up.
Okay, now we'll go to commissioners' questions for the applicant or city staff. Okay, I had a couple. How does that, it doesn't affect those CDOT trailers down there at all?
No, the, that area is just like a separate lease to the.
Quick question on that. I thought we approved one building, and we've got two down there.
We approved the one construction trailer plus storage and parking and material storage, but so I don't know what their second building is. I will look into that.
Yeah, just, just, it seemed to me like there's two of them there.
Right.
That's a, that's a difference.
Separate from this application because they have their very discreet areas with more space.
So they're not gonna take up parking from each other.
Right, I wouldn't really anticipate many other than on the drive in and out, you know, if there was like a Kramer vehicle coming in or out and vice versa, that would be the only time I'd expect really any interaction. Kramer only occupies the site really from during business hours, and they use some parking at when they're doing night operations there, but.
Okay, and then it was 30 campsites. Is that what we did last year too, was 30? It was 30?
Yeah, it's the, there weren't any changes proposed to the, I guess, number of people on site.
Okay. And then my next one was the private campsites, but the proposable explicitity states that no campfires will be permitted. But then the next sentence is Stafford recommends a condition of approval that camp, stoves, and fires may only be operated on approved surfaces, blah, blah, blah. Is that the same as last year? I mean, I think that was one of our biggest concerns last year was campfires because of how dry it is, and then the forest that's all back behind them.
I think I may have, so conditions five and six, so number five was that the fire authority approves the location of campsites and cooking areas, and number six, no open fires are permitted.
Okay, so that wording.
Would have just probably been a carryover that I missed.
Kind of counter, okay.
Yeah, I would say definitely we I would be deferring to the actual conditions in place.
Okay, um. Oh, um yeah, I was a little hesitant on it going the two years. But they'll come back for approval just through council or through you to continue it till the next year.
Is that we would have Duke, the applicant back. Maybe even as just a like a work session item potentially to planning commission at a meeting. For what we're calling a compliance review. To just make sure that we kind of checked the boxes on conditions and requirements during twenty twenty five and there aren't any issues that need to change. Because like I say, if. We find that there are some horrible violations on site. We could revoke the CP at any time with going through the proper channels, but this would just kind of give us an extra level of. Hey, what worked well, what didn't, what do we want to see changed?
So it's just kind of like a work session, not going through all of this, the public hearing again. And then Nick, are you comfortable with the verbiage that it? That that can be done that way?
Yeah, and if if something comes up at the compliance review and it's found that, you know. Not saying it's gonna happen, like half of the conditions imposed weren't met. Then the council could go on and revoke the CP at any time.
Yeah, my thought would be that we would look at it and say, alright, well, it looks good, no issues. You're not gonna pass anything along to council, but. Did recognize major issues, then perhaps out of that compliance review. Meeting, we would say, hey, council, you need to consider a revocation. But what it does allow the applicant to do is to avoid the whole lengthy referral period, avoid having to have the ordinances, multiple public hearings. Things like that.
Okay, that was the only questions I had. I I never heard anything that came up either, so yeah.
Will we also be able to modify the? Yeah, next time, what is it, contract ordinance with a with them? Um it's if we don't want to revoke necessarily, but we feel like there's some things that need to be added or changed.
No, it's. In that you would have to revoke and then redo it essentially.
But that's still a process that can be done.
Yeah, it might be like for them might not be ideal because they they can revoke them, they have to start that at that time.
But that means they did something wrong.
My thought would be that we'd want to. We'd want to meet maybe at the end of the season, like let's say October or something, pencil it in, get it done. Early so that if there were issues, um you know, maybe Duke could either just say, hey, I'm informally say. I I am gonna address these things even without put, you know, and then it's kind of relying on trust, I guess. But.
The permit holder can request an applicant or amendment to the application or to the. To the conditions. But we can't amend once we don't have.
But like you said, if you do it in the fall after the season while everything's still. Fresh in everybody's mind of what's going on, it gives the applicant then time to, like you said, either address it or if something has to be. Revoked and redone at that point, but okay, but we do have that ability. Everybody.
In a roundabout way, yeah.
Roundabout way, okay.
Cindy, I have a question.
Were you done?
Uh no, go ahead, I.
If at any time they don't live up to these um. Conditions. Then the council, the planning commission can revoke the permit, right?
The city council does, yeah. It just has to have a hearing on it as well.
If all of a sudden they weren't emptying the porta potties or something.
Yeah, yeah, we we certainly wouldn't be able to just kind of sweep the rug out from under ABA, but.
We would initiate that hearing to revoke, right?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, you'd just be like. Essentially prosecuting a case against them, they present evidence that they haven't been meeting their.
Got a lot of marks on our faces. So. First, I guess I would like to ask the applicant a question. I would like to know what these things or what is. His permanent solution idea.
Well. I mean, if Dreamin's free, we would, we would work with the current ownership that lives out of. Not out of state, but out on the eastern slope to zone the three properties. We would acquire a piece of the property. We would. Come into town with to town or to planning for zoning. Um and we would turn that camping permanent. We would work with the town as well as the forest service to bring water over. And then be able to build a permanent solution for camping. Uh and that way we would have a permanent solution for our staff and then we'd have uh that that would be ideal. If uh if if I could get there, uh it's gonna take all stakeholders to come to the table, but we we think. Uh we think it could happen, so that's the goal. Does that answer the question?
Uh yeah.
Okay.
I have another question.
Yes.
If, because we're uh working countywide to have this uh housing authority. And um. If was to happen that they approach you. To say, hey, that property has been identified as a property where you could build. Employee housing that could be used year round and not just for summer. Uh would that be something that you'd be interested in? Being part of?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, I I think this, you know, we obviously. Any any business, whether it's a restaurant or rafting company, housing obviously in Colorado is challenged, so um. Where camping is something we can afford, right? But if we could work in a partnership where. Someone can utilize it for part of the year and we could utilize it for another part of the year. Uh that would be ideal, right? So because we could all share in the expense of that construction, but. We would very much be interested in, I mean, gosh, I'd love to do something with Loveland, say, and they. They handle in the winter, we handle in the summer, we can get something that that staff can afford. I think the biggest challenge we run. And what makes camping appealing is, uh well, it's summertime, so it makes it palatable, but it's something people can afford. Uh and affordability for this group is very important, so um. We're always interested in anything that can get our staff housed for sure.
Thank you. Um Dylan, next question for you. I um I would you explain to me your uh thought process about. In my mind, that road with the construction, the ball at the ball fields, it's gonna be, I I don't know, I imagine it's gonna be busy. So can you tell, talk to me about it, convince me that it's not, I guess. That it's gonna be fine.
I don't think that this particular use will substantially. Increase the busyness of the road, given. How busy it's already anticipated to be, especially this season and potentially into the next. And so when I mentioned that earlier, I think. There will be construction impacts to that road. Because of trucks coming in and out, construction vehicles and the like and. Given the location of this campsite. Given the location of the ABA rafting business, which is on highway one oh three. And the fact that they don't have a lot of marketing there. The plan at least, and I don't know how well it worked last year, but the plan is to have. As many of employees as possible walking or biking to the site and so. When you look at, well, how much would a residential use bring as far as average daily trips? You know, we say multi families, five trips per day. I would expect people who are camping. And working, you know, for a rafting company to probably have fewer than five vehicle trips per day because. It's just not a super convenient. That, you know, by the time you drove all the way down the hill and then out and around and into town, you could walk to Safeway or ride your bike and so. That's a very, that's not a statistics driven, you know, like evidence based thing, but I. Have a feeling that the impacts from this business are going to be a lot lower than the impacts from some other things that are happening in the area.
Okay. Um if anybody has questions, go ahead. I have a couple I have to find here.
Uh okay, um. On my notes for uh the conditions, I had a couple ideas. And mostly for us to discuss, I guess, um I was thinking that. I think we have been talking about uh maybe changing a little bit the way we do things when we uh. Have properties or businesses needing to have um. Checkups or. I don't know, like we were talking about the the hotels and how they're gonna have to pay for their inspections and stuff like that. So thinking uh that's something that we could add. Or like if we need to be going and inspecting them, maybe that's something that they. I don't exactly, there's a survey that will pay to get inspected or they pay the CD a fee or something for that, I thought that you think. Another one.
Well, could it be? I mean, I I think the police department's probably aware that it's there, so I would think it's part of their patrolling. I mean, you're saying going and inspect like if the fire pit's fine or the outhouses are good?
Yeah, um I think somewhere here says that uh they can be inspected at any time, right? So we actually wanted to make sure that they get inspected at. So what thing or whatever, that's an option that I see that could happen. It's not like. A super priority thing, but I just thought I should mention it. Um. I wrote it down on four, portable water. In case, you know, people are going and making sure they have water or they have, I don't know, whatever they're checking, if they're checking.
Um can a um. Recommendation, can it, can you have something that states that the city ordinance officer? Will do site visits? Something to that effect, I mean.
Idea with like number four and number five and then. Well, number four, number five is the thought that before like people are occupying the site. We'd have someone go and say, you know, it looks good, ready to go, which. Fire authority has said they're happy to do. For like if we wanted to do an inspection to say, well, are they still meeting all of these requirements? If it's not something we're doing it daily or weekly, then certainly I think it would be within the city's. Ability or capacity to do that, but if the expectation was to do it. Daily, that might be a lot harder. Um and we might want to consider something else, but I do think between like myself or some of these and then like PD. Police Department. I have, I think we'd be having the capacity to do it, because PD does already go up there relatively frequently, like as part of their rounds. So if they saw any major issues.
So are you looking for pre inspections or inspections during?
Um I would just mentioning that if we actually do inspections and if. Or however often we decide to do them, like we could charge my fee for those inspections.
I think if we didn't have any complaints from the last time they were around, I feel like it's almost. providing trust in the company that that's gonna go smoothly for this first round at least until complaints pop up. Um instead of putting an additional fee on the company that's just trying to fight fight hell for their employees, for a company that brings in quite a bit of money for the city. I don't know, but I do agree, like it's something, if things start to pop up, absolutely, there should be something. I don't know if we have to put that in place now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Or if it's something we could add later.
Yeah, and that was kind of the intention, we're just bringing up here because this. Could happen, and I'm not saying it has to be some operating for me, you know. Um but anyway, something we can just start talking about whenever we do more stuff like this.
Okay.
Um. Then another uh with number ten, it came to my mind that I think for uh short term rentals, we requested. A contact we provided. And I was thinking here because it's camping, because of the potential for like. I don't know, hopefully not any wildfires or any of that uh started there. If we if we want, if we think that it would be important to have a contact in on site. And I don't know, he mentioned that he was gonna have someone like like a. Like a supervisor on site or not, yes. So yeah, but.
Yes, we we'll we'll have someone on site and and contact information. Uh that should be in. That was all, we were, I think we were, it was, it was stated that that was the case last year and that of course will be the. Case this year. We we will have someone in charge of the campground. We call him the mayor, but uh but we always have a mayor.
We did have that, that was a condition from last year and we did have contact and as far as I know, neither PD nor. Us had ever like city staff here, it's, you all had to use it, but we did have it.
And didn't they have a contact for? The people renting from you guys, the the people that were living there, remember they have the whole.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would assume that's still in place, that you're still doing it that way.
Yes, that's correct. We have everybody that's, everybody's assigned a space and everybody that's up there is accounted for. Uh we don't have anybody that's not an employee uh of the company that is allowed to stay there.
Comfortable with that, then?
Yeah.
Thank you. So always good questions. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. Six forty two. And now we'll ask for a motion. And there is on page eight.
Okay. I move to recommend that the city council approve the conditional use permit application. To allow employee camping on ninety five East Idaho Springs Road. For the twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six rafting seasons. Including all conditions recommended by planning staff in the planning commission staff report.
There you go, second. Second. Hey, any other discussion? Roll call. Katie Manswell.
Hi.
Chuck Howard.
Yes.
Judy Murphy.
I.
Vice Chair, first one, Cruz Aleng. Chair Cindy Olson, yes. Hey, the motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, commission. I really appreciate your consideration and we'll we'll make sure we keep the place clean and quiet.
Great, thank you.
So next step will be a public hearing with council on.
Okay, any other old business? No, okay, any other questions, comments? We'll adjourn the meeting six forty three. And go into a work session.
Yeah, do you all want a quick break or anything or you wanna just roll right into it?
No, let's keep rolling.
Okay, well.
Thank you, commission. Have a wonderful evening. I just figured as long as he's sitting there, let's keep going.
Well, yeah, well, I'll just um I'll quit this for two minutes.
I'm leaving this again.
Is he coming or no? Yeah, I was gonna say, it's no problem. Okay, go for it.
Okay, so for this work session, we have two items. The first one was just about hotel infections. It's sort of an update and then sort of a new idea to build off of what we approved of the extended stay ordinance. Since I finalized this, we actually had a pretty good meeting with Safe Built to figure out sort of what they're planning on doing for this year. Um, and also Kelly from the Fire Authority has confirmed that they're already doing a fire inspection every year for every business in town. And so they have already been into a lot of these places in the last six months, which is quite positive because some of them, I think, until recently haven't had that happen, but now they've already put it in place. They do a fire inspection every year, which is quite good because it kind of makes like a the, the issue that I bring up in this report less of an issue, I think, because the thing we ran into working with Safe Built on scheduling inspection to look at these spaces is like. How, how can Safe Built just look at room eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, but pass it through everything else and, you know, and Safe Built's kind of like, well, we have. Like the way they think they're gonna have to do it is maybe only do four or five rooms a day because it could take quite a long time. And so their concern, or I guess staff concern is, let's say the entire premise is extended stay for part of the year. That means that Safe Built might have to look at twenty rooms and it might take four or five days, which gets costly and takes up a ton of time. And so Guy Patterson, the Assistant City Administrator, he had worked on a similar program in Salida for short-term rentals where they were proposing instead of having our building department go and do an inspection every year, every other year, why don't we just put the onus on the operator to hire a certified inspector, like a home inspector, but a commercial inspector to say. Yeah, it meets our requirements. And then it lets kind of market forces play out as how much it costs to do and it takes the onus off of a department that's not maybe equipped to review the whole thing. Um, or only pick and choose certain areas to look at. Um, it kind of takes the, takes it off of them. And so the way Guy, that, you know, the way we kind of see it potentially going is for this year. I think Safe Built has said they're able to do it. They'll go in, they'll look at what they have to look at, but if they pass a room and it, they see there's like a hole in the wall or there's an issue with one of the non-extended stay rooms. Like that's gonna make them fail the whole inspection. And I think that's probably a good thing because you don't want, you know, if one room's bad. You want to fix it even if it's not an extended stay room because it's all the same facility, but I think it just will get complicated quickly. And so um, we kind of say, well, if we said, hey, if you're a lodging business and it could apply to all lodging, not just extended stays, you could say, hey, you know, every three years or every two years, you have to hire one of these certified inspectors from the ICC. They will review the code or review against our property maintenance code. We'll have a checklist. Once they sign on, on it, we'll issue you your business license or extended stay license. This is very early in the process, but we wanted to get your feedback and questions and things like that to see if it's even worth pursuing perhaps for twenty-twenty-six.
I, I liked the, I, I don't like the idea of Safe Built coming in and doing all of it. Um, I don't think. I mean, just some of the scheduling and stuff. You hear other things. There's conflicts. They can't come, this, that.
Right.
Um, to put it on the property owner is, is a great idea, but to have to do it every year, I think, would be costly. I mean, it's not like we're trying to nail them with costs. The other thing is, I thought we were going into this thinking that it was gonna be just the fire department doing it. I, I think Jeremy had voluntarily had said, hey, this is kind of what we do anyway.
Right.
Could we do that same thing, having that checklist for the fire department? That's what they're going in and looking for. Um, and while we, I mean, that's the first thing we gotta do with the ones coming up and then maybe go into and develop the one where they have to hire somebody. I'm afraid if they're hiring somebody and they're going by some of these codes. What, when did you say, twenty-eighteen or twenty-sixteen? What was it?
We've adopted the twenty-eighteen International Property Maintenance Code and so strictly speaking, um. They should be meeting that anyway.
Okay.
If you're operate, the big thing that came up was Safe Built said. Well, now you're having people live in these units potentially for years on end. Functionally, because there, and there are a few cases where that is true, like someone has stayed in a hotel room for well over a year. And I think it's like not a secret that that's happening in some of these spaces. Um. From a fire perspective, they've said things have gotten a lot better, which is quite promising, but from a building perspective, they've said. And maybe the discussion should be, do we need a building review for life safety or is fire enough?
So that twenty-eighteen code that you're talking about, that it's, it's not the building code, it's property maintenance code. Is property owners that have these hotels, motels, extended stay, are they aware of that code? So they already know that their property's supposed to be up to the twenty-eighteen standard?
Well, that I'm not sure because my, my understanding of the property maintenance code is it applies mostly to residential. And so what Safe Built has sort of argued when we engaged them on it was you're kind of converting this to a residential use because people are staying longer than thirty nights. And so they wouldn't really be comfortable saying, yeah, go ahead. And live here long term without making sure it's up to that standard.
I've never heard of that code till tonight. The building maintenance code. So that's why I'm, I'm wondering how, how do they become aware of it? And would anybody be able to meet those standards? I guess I'd want to look at the code to see how strict or detailed it is.
Right, it's pretty detailed. I mean, we adopted chapters one through eight and we don't have it actually in the code, but it's like a book.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
That would be a tough one.
And so I think the concern that was sort of brought up was not so much, do we want, do we need them to meet a certain standard? I think the concern more so from the city is like, if we're giving them a license to do this thing, we've kind of said. You're good to go. And there's at least concern from, maybe not legal concern, I don't know. About sort of a liability associated with saying like, yeah, let people live here. And so if you require them to meet this code, then you can kind of say, well, now we don't have that liability because like clearly it's safe because it's beating this code. And so, but the code is quite. It's, it's huge, you know, and it applies to things like sidewalks and railings and all of that. And so it gets complicated in a hurry. It's not as simple as just looking at.
How many outlets are being used and are they?
Right.
Burnt or something?
And, and one of the reasons we were thinking Safe Built would have to be involved is let's say the communal kitchens, you know, there's probably some of them who have, just don't have it right now and are building it or have them, but may or may not have pulled permits for those things. And so fire couldn't necessarily come in and say, hey, this kitchen space meets code requirements for kitchen. Because they're not.
So maybe Safe Built does the inspection on kitchens because I get what you're saying there. I mean, the whole idea of this was a lot of the liability too. It's because we're allowing this use and the city never, you know, we're allowing it, but yet there's no rules to it. So if something was to happen. I don't know if you want to break it up or anything, but I could see we're building the kitchen, you bet. You would want the building inspector so it is up to code. Cause that's pretty important, I would think. Your electrical outlets and stuff. He's just exploring. So have Safe Built do that and then the Fire Authority do the rooms. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there. To do this inspection to start in June first. Because it's not like we're gonna get very far on this by June first. What was the thought? The Fire Authority, right?
Well, it's kind of like Safe Built has said. If we said, hey, we're just gonna have Safe Built and the Fire Authority is going to do it regardless because they've now set a standard where they're going to review for fire safety every year, whether it's an extended stay or not. And so in that respect, you know, they've said, well, if we need to get these done by July first or the, you know, normally they do it midsummer into fall and they're like, we could easily push the schedule up and do it in May and hit them all in May. And it's easy because the Fire Authority can pretty much by, you know, law, go into all the spaces they need to go into. So we could, because the ordinance is not specific on what the inspection needs to be. Like theoretically, I could just walk through and do it and then that would check the box of requiring inspection, but the idea of maybe doing fire and the building review is to kind of catch any issues before we start letting folks legally live there.
So you're thinking they have to do their inspection by July first with the building?
Yeah, we've had meetings with building and they can definitely do things scheduled, like they were working on putting together like a easy review process for their end.
You mean Safe Built?
Yeah, right. So they, they were putting that together. They could certainly be up and running and do inspections even this month. Um, so we could have it all inspected by July first. I'm guessing even with the Fire Authority, there's gonna be some, if we just did Fire Authority, there would be some who will not be able to be compliant by July first, which is why we built in that kind of second deadline of January first of twenty-twenty-six. Um, so I guess the I guess now there's sort of two questions. One, do we broadly, like are, would planning commission be comfortable if it was just a Fire Authority inspection and we didn't have like a building life safety inspection done this year? Um, and then the second question would be going forward, even if we said this year, we'll kind of just do just fire, like going forward, do we want a process that people have to meet for this property maintenance code? Those would be the two questions I have is how do we, what's the ideal way to do it this year? What would be the goal? What, what, you know, I, I think either looking back on when we approved it initially or thinking about it now as it's evolved, what's the goal?
Guess I have a hard time with this property maintenance thing because I've just never heard of it before and if a property owner's not even gonna be aware of it.
Well, yeah, because I think if you're an apartment building or you're like the Mitchell White Building, I would hope that you're aware of it because you're, you know, a residential building.
I mean, it's their responsibility of business owners, right?
True.
Right. And, you know, if you're just a commercial business, maybe you have. I think.
This is the first time I've heard of it.
Too, yeah.
It definitely would be sort of thing where whatever is done, whether Safe Built does it this year, whether we kind of put in this new or a new system for inspection and clarify it. Year one of getting into compliance is by far going to be the toughest for folks who haven't stayed on top of keeping sort of safe living spaces.
And we want them to get it.
Once you go through the process once, you hopefully will just maintain your level and then it's a super easy inspection every year and you don't really have to do anything. So there will definitely be pain, if you will, for a business owner who has a lot of things that they need to bring up to, you know, like a modern day standard. But the property maintenance code, by understanding, is also such that it doesn't require you to meet today's code. It has, like if, if I built my house and, you know, my house was wired in nineteen eighty-four, they wouldn't come in and say, well, now you have to upgrade in twenty-twenty-four. They would say. It has to be safe and properly maintained.
Okay. That's what I was afraid of is they're gonna come in and say, okay, nothing here. And they'd be caught, yeah, and be so costly that.
That's next year.
Uh, question, would, um, the could the first inspection be done by this ICC certified inspectors if we wanted to and we tell them they have a paper? Or that's an option or not?
Right now?
Yeah, for the first inspection. Or we would want it to be Safe Built or the Fire Authority?
Fire Authority does it anyway, correct?
This, this ordinance says the city does the inspection.
Okay.
I.
So, okay.
Yeah, I think it would be. I mean, I, I wonder, it's vague enough where maybe we say, hey, you have to find someone to do the inspection for you, but it's so vague that you kind of say, well, what are we holding them to in general, other than everything in the code, which technically you're supposed to be everything in the code if you want to operate as a business.
We should have told them already.
I personally do not like the idea of then selecting inspector. What happens when their cousin Jim is an ICC inspector from down the road? And that guy gives them a clean bill of health and who are we to say that it was, you know, a bogus inspection? We made you get the inspection.
Or they can make up their own and write it off, yeah. How do we verify that that's?
Well, there is a, ICC has a list of licensed inspectors for a variety of things. There's like general commercial, but there's also there is a property maintenance or housing inspector certification you can get. So I just put a, on the ICC website, I put a query in of how many of them are within a fifty mile radius and there was over forty. And so theoretically, I guess, maybe someone's cousin can do it, but as with anything that's inspection based, like I'm putting a lot of faith into a survey, a surveyor to put their stamp on the work and if they're willing to stamp it and they've funged all the numbers. Like I have to trust it, but if, if it's found out that they did it wrong, they'd probably lose their license.
Are they licensed through the state, through DORA?
Uh, I think it's through, like it's federal, like it's in.
Just curious, that's a, you don't, I don't know. Cause that's true, any of your licensing, you do building, all that stuff through DORA, they have to register through there.
I think it's specifically registered through the International Code Council, ICC, like it's their own licensing thing.
Okay.
So again, obviously anytime you're if Safe Built were to come out and do it, then you trust that Safe Built doesn't have.
Doesn't. Who's paying Safe Built?
Well, we have the application fee that's two hundred and fifty dollars that's set per the P schedule, so that would cover presumably like it should cover the basic infection costs, but if they have issues that need to be addressed, then they need to pull billing permit. Now they have permit fees.
Right.
And that would have the whole permit fees that are paid to Safe Built.
Okay, so that covers SafeBuild. I would think the inspection, I guess I was thinking a few hundred dollars for an inspection.
Yeah.
I think a home, when you're real estate, doing a home inspection.
Right, and it's probably more expensive than your average home in town, because the home in town is what, two thousand square feet, fifteen hundred square feet? This could be thirty thousand square feet.
Well, those costs are about eight hundred dollars right now for inspection when you're buying.
Right, so I think it's probably reasonable to say that if we required a. ICC inspector to come on and inspect an entire hotel building, it'll be over a thousand dollars. Guessing if you're saying it's eight hundred for a house now, but. If SafeBuild were to identify issues, I could see those costs escalating quite quickly as well. Obviously, if fire came in and said, hey, we're doing the inspection, it's a hundred bucks, which is what they did recharge. For something like this, they've told me. If they notice issues, then they're also going to say, well, now you have to. Pull building permits, or we're gonna slap a do not occupy on your whole premise potentially, and so. I think to get into compliance, there's gonna be costs either way, unless you've stayed on top of it real well. And that's why we're thinking maybe make it every three years, and then you can build an expense in that, every three years you have. Pay two thousand dollars for inspections.
I'm almost thinking, going back to thinking that the ones that are building kitchens right now. Which you said, all the properties we talked about have pulled, the thing are are willing to do this now. Those should be inspected by SafeBuild, because the electrical outlet for an oven might be. I don't know, is it different? Yeah, so I think. But like you said, the fire authority is not gonna go in and do an inspection on a kitchen and look at it, if they've got the right plugs everywhere.
Well, they would make sure that, I mean, they would probably look and say, is this stove a fire hazard? And if it's like wired totally improperly, they would definitely be able to. I would guess they would do that, but they're not building code inspectors, so they wouldn't be able to really. Speak to that. So I think it's, regardless, we can figure something out, but it's a hard balance of. How much cost do we wanna put on a business while also making sure that it's safe for long term occupancy? And we've talked about it a little bit throughout the process, but now that we're actually digging into doing the inspection, that kind of opened the can of worms, because you're like. Fire comes out and they see. Anything, you know, it might.
So what does a new business, well, they have to go through the building department, inspect them? Same with a remodel, anything that's pulling a permit. Okay, that's a question, or they pull in a permit to do these kitchens?
Well, that's the question. Do they have them already? Did they build them ten years ago? Was it built sixty years ago? Are they building it now? If they're building it now, they should be coming in and saying we are pulling the permit. If they already have had a stove wired for a number of years, it gets much more complicated for certainly myself, but. Even a building inspector, how do they say, when was the stove put in, and would it have had permits if it's a forty year old stove?
I guess that's a good question. We should look at the properties that we know that pulled these, did they ever pull a permit to put those kitchens in? Cause they didn't have one before, communal kitchens. I can name three of them off the top of my head. I bet you there's no building permit.
I would say that when you think about the businesses that are submitted, for instance, stay lodging. The likelihood that they pulled all the building permits necessary for those kitchen spaces is probably pretty low. Just looking at. Some records that we have for building permits over the last, say, ten years. Now, if it was built more than ten years ago. It'll be harder, harder to tell.
What's your thought on the direction that works for staff and the city?
Well, I've. I think I have some of the same. Con- concerns or thoughts that that you brought up on. Would the fire, is fire enough? Cause if it is, great, they will make sure at very least that. There's not. Glaring fire hazards, and they know, especially now, that these spaces are being used long term. So they can kind of review it through that lens. So if all our concern is. Is the, you know, from a fire safety standpoint, are they good? Then that's probably enough. I think for kitchens, we wanna make sure that the kitchens. You know, actually needs code requirements from kitchen. And then the the other thing that we haven't touched on, but is important is. Technically, for residential spaces, we do have minimum square footage requirements to meet fire code and building code. And so when you think of a space that's. I I believe what the requirement technically is, is one person per two hundred square feet. And so when you think of a small. Hotel room. They're unquestionably not gonna get approved if they have. A set of bunk beds in a four hundred square foot room, and they're trying to put four people in it. But that wasn't necessarily the goal is, I think part of that was the goal, you say, if there's. Hundred people living in twenty rooms, or eighty people living in twenty rooms, that's also quite, you know, not a good.
But that brings up a good question, because. At what point do you inspect it? Because they're changing from winter operation to summer, so. The rooms change. But bedding changes. It's like you might go from four beds, all of a sudden back to a two bedroom. Or a queen room that they're renting out for the summer.
Though that's, my understanding is there's only really two of the six that operate that way. From their applications, they've said. You know, from October to April, we rent, you know, we have like a seasonal housing, but the rest of the year is short term. A lot of, a few of the others are like, we just have J ones that come in and they can stay for eight months, or whatever their visa is, they can stay the whole time. And then it just switches over and switches over, and so. Those ones, you would think, like, you know, they mentioned. She, the fire authority mentioned once, you know, they went in and there was like a family of five living in one of these hotel rooms, and there's no way that they can. Approve that while meeting a square footage amounts. Just because it's. You know, a lot of people in a hotel room for, you know, for a couple of days, that's fine, but for a couple of months, I think it's.
Okay, so you need direction right now for the licensing that's gonna be effective July first. And then this can still be developed beyond that.
Yeah, I think if, and if you don't have direction on either, we can, you know, revisit it. Later as well, especially for the long term, like if if planning commission doesn't have a direction on. How you envision it going this year, then I think staff will just kind of figure out what ultimately. Has to be done. But if there are anything that we can. Put in place that has backing of everyone, then that. Is fantastic as well, because you have a lot of background on why ultimately this got.
I still keep thinking SafeBuild and the fire authority. I just don't think that two hundred forty dollar fee. Is gonna cover SafeBuild.
Well, especially, that that's the thing is, if they were, if they could just get it all done, like. If they were coming into one of the shops downtown, because it's a change of use, and they do a life safety inspection, it's seventy five dollars.
Oh, okay.
But the problem is, these are much larger spaces, and if they have to take several days to review it all, like. Seventy five, seventy five, seventy five, you know, it's like adds up quick, because they have to do a lot of inspections. So that's where it'll add up is, if you only had a few rooms, they could do it for seventy five dollars easy. But I think it'll be more expensive, because it will take a lot longer to look at a whole hotel.
Right.
Um, this list the uh guy presented. Is that something that, that, you know, like checklist or something? Is that something that you would be, would need? For. Uh, SafeBuild or and ICC certified inspector? I mean, for sure, if you want it?
So the idea of this checklist that that guy had put together was. This is the main things from that international property maintenance code. And so rather, so technically. In this case, they would have said, you have, you should be compliant with everything in that code, but here's the main things that we. Kind of think, want you to check, check off.
Okay, and so that will be a checklist that you give to the property owners? Or is it a checklist that, well, I guess they could have it so they know. But also the inspector, whichever, whoever, where it come from, knows exactly what we want?
I think the idea would be, you would go to the inspector, and SafeBuild actually already has something similar. That they kind of have developed to say, here's all the main things that we would typically want to look at, and so it's. Similar to this, but that's in the context of them doing the inspections. I think the idea would be if we. Eventually put in a system where there was a third party doing inspections, then. We'd wanna develop something like this and say, like, unless your person you hired can check off all this, anything that fails has to be fixed. But theoretically, SafeBuild would be looking at all of the property maintenance code. However, well, they actually know it, I guess, on site.
I think some of the questions I have, that if you could bring them back to us by the next meeting, would be. Is there an up to amount that SafeBuild would do the properties for right now, going into it the first year? You know, cause you don't wanna overly charge everybody. I mean, that's all of a sudden if they're having to. Modify something, and now this on top of it, I don't know if that's realistic. And then let the fire authority do their. Wellness visit also. Because that's not costing us anything, right? Or the property owner.
Right, yeah, if, I mean, if fire authority already charges a fee, they'll just continue to charge the fee.
Right, it's something they should already be used to, I mean, or had already.
Right, from a. You're on the spot here, Nick. From a liability standpoint, if we did just say, we're just gonna have fire authority inspect, do you think there's? Concern with that?
No, I don't think so, just because it's not a public facility.
Sure, so if we said, you know, ultimately that's the goal, and we'll figure out a better solution for upcoming years. We could at least rest assured that, like, I will go and inspect the spaces and fire authority would, but.
We've had inspection yet?
No, we haven't scheduled any, because we've been trying to figure out what exactly we wanted.
I think I'm comfortable with that, because I think the. Other thing to look at is, like I was saying, those building permits for the kitchens that were done, and then maybe if. It's a thought that, wait a minute, we should be getting those inspected, or even talk to Jeremy, is is that something that they feel they can cover? And if not, then we should reevaluate it, whether. SafeBuild should look at the kitchens.
I have a question. Does, does the fire inspection have a list of what they look at?
I don't have a copy of the list, but I know they have like a set fire code standard that they would be looking at.
I mean, it's something more than just whether the smoke detectors.
Right, they essentially have something. They have a fire, international fire code that's like a building code, but specifically for fire, and there is. I'm I'm not an expert on either of them, but from conversations with both of them, there's a lot of overlap on some of those things, so. I do feel comfortable that I'm not, that. They really just make sure it's not getting people down. It might not meet all of the requirements that we were looking for, but. From Cindy, what you said, perhaps would planning commission be comfortable if staff went the direction of. We'll have staff and fire authority do an initial review, and if there's any issues that either of us uncover. SafeBuild unquestionably has to review. If fire authority signs off applying colors, perhaps. Wouldn't like need.
Yeah, I'm comfortable with that.
That's fun.
Yeah, and if we kind of across a bunch of issues, then we can change it.
I feel like because it's lodging, I mean, I feel like if it was any other business, uh, we'd totally fine with that, because it's lodging and because of this. Worries that we've had, and the reason why we're doing what we're doing, I feel like. I feel like it will be best, I feel more comfortable with SafeBuild, we just say SafeBuild has to check and approve this. And then we can decide whatever after that, like, but having like started good. And I understand that, yeah, they might find things that they might have to spend money, but I mean, better catch it now than later on.
The only problem I have with that is if we went to change all this to the extended stay, so we're aware of what's going on. And they're using it, because in essence, it's still a hotel. We're just saying our hotel didn't allow them to stay over thirty days, so let's call it extended stay. So if we wouldn't have done this, they wouldn't be getting that inspection anyway. The fire authority, if anything, how often are they doing hotels every year?
Yeah, that's what you said, is they.
So they've been doing it already, so.
For that sort of basic, they, you know, like, they're not saying, do this need life safety requirements for a. Residential unit, which I think the property maintenance code would be looking at it more from that lens to say. Is this suitable for long term rental? Residency, rather than. Is there a fire violation, because there's too many people, or there's issues with, you know, the wiring, or issues with this or that, and so like. Unquestionably, getting SafeBuilt in or a ICC certified person will. Catch more things. It's just, was the intent of this program to catch all those things? And the one other thing that I just kind of remembered was. They had some questions when we were talking with them about, well, is there a limitation on how long someone can stay? Because like if someone, if there's a limitation of six months or one year, and then they have to leave. It might be more palatable to do the bare minimum than if you say, well, someone could live here for eight, eight years, because if someone's there. Indefinitely. From a building code standpoint, they would really wanna see fire separation between units. Because now it really has become a residential unit, and so. That gets even more complicated and was not contemplated with the ordinance.
Yeah, where we should have had a limit in there.
Right.
When they're operating as the extended stay, or the rooms that they're having extended stay.
Right, and the city definitely did not consider. Would they have to do fire separation, because it's changed, like, I don't think we thought of it. To your point, we didn't think of it as a change in use, we just thought of it as people could stay longer. And if that's how we want to continue thinking of it, perhaps the fire authority doing their review. Is sufficient, but then if, and then with the caveat that the second I see that they have a kitchen that's not permitted, I'd say you have to do. Building permits for that kitchen.
Which would trigger an inspection to pass.
What if, sorry, uh, what if we were to. Develop this checklist? For us, for the city? We have SafeBuild do the person's inspection. And like you said, maybe they come up with all these gigantic list, and we're like, okay, well, let's compare with our checklist. And then from there, we can kind of negotiate, or, you know, with the property owner, and be like, okay, these are our priorities. These are the things you have to take out first, the other ones. And some, I don't know, we give them time, or we're like, when you're done with this, let's talk again and figure out a timeline for the rest of the things. Um, and also then. We can just, it can be the one time and only, and then from then on, it can just be the fire authority.
Right, I think. We wouldn't, I agree that we wouldn't need SafeBuilt in every year, because once you've. Met all SafeBuild criterias, unless you're making more changes or letting things deteriorate, then. Things shouldn't have changed too much. But getting them in will. Who's, I think the concern from everyone is, it'll be a lot more costly to have SafeBuild come in. Cause they will definitely catch more things than a fire review would. And, you know, are those things that will matter? I think if SafeBuild comes in and they notice code violations. They're going to hold you to those code violations, even if. They're going to hold you to those code violations, even if they're not necessary. So we could still say, well, fine, we'll still issue the license. But Safe Build is gonna require them to bring it up to like address those violations regardless. To your point about maybe there's some things we can kind of.
Mm hmm, mm hmm.
Set aside.
And could they also work with us in the timeline they will create or no? They that's a completely different.
I mean, like if they said, hey, you've got this issue, this issue and this issue and you have to pick some, then it is totally up to the property owner to. Make those changes, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Like the timeline could be if someone said, hey, you have this violation. And then I submit to fix that violation the next day, it might only be a week or two until Safe Build come back out and inspect and make sure that it's now fixed. But. If it's like, hey, you have to totally rewire this room because. You know, you can't meet build the kitchen, otherwise that could take months and. Tens of thousands of dollars eventually. Which may be required for kitchens anyway, but it might not be required for like a existing bathroom.
Um, it's would it be possible to have another conversation with Safe Built and figure out what detail like if. We come up with a list of priorities over on checklist and they identify more things than our priorities, then they would. Play with us in the timeline or if not.
But their.
You know, that's an option at all.
But their responsibility is to abide by the code that the city has adopted.
Uh huh.
So.
Is that ours?
No, it's the building.
Well, that's a.
I mean, that is.
That isn't as a commission ours to follow to make sure the codes are forced.
But that's what I mean, they're gonna have to go by the code, what code are they using, what year?
Twenty eighteen.
Um, for the building codes to Safe Built is. Cuz I know there's it changed whatever the city adopts.
Yeah, I think next year will adopt the. Twenty twenty one.
Right, so it's it's there. I mean, they can't go into a place and decide, oh, I won't write them up for that or I'll ignore that. I mean, they have a responsibility. As being building inspectors to follow the code, so even if we give them a checklist, we might be able to give them a checklist that these are. Things we want them to check, but they're probably gonna go in and check more.
Yeah, no, what will happen is they will come out with their list. And then we in the city compare the lists of things and they. Might have more stuff, but then they and they will, we're not saying that they don't need to get done, we're just saying that. To help out and and you know, and collaborate with the property owners and help them out.
I don't think.
Then we just make them choose to ignore it.
They will have the property owner will be helped to.
And and I understand that that's kind of what I'm asking. Uh, Dylan, if asking them if that's an option is a thing cuz I mean, do we?
Not in state business.
I wouldn't think Safe Built would say, no, I'm gonna ignore those other things.
And that's not, nobody's saying that we need to ignore them. You're gonna fix them, but you have a timeline. So you fix it.
If I'm getting your, what you're saying is you'd say, here's the checklist of necessary items we need in order for you to check, sign up. In order for us to issue the license.
Exactly.
Anything else they find, obviously you still need to fix.
Yeah.
But since they're not, it's life safety related, we'll still issue the license, but note you still need to.
Yeah, you still need to do that, but the license here, you can have it, exactly.
How long does Safe Built give somebody to? Become compliant then?
I mean, I guess it probably depends on what it is, you know, if it's like a really minor issue and if they're already in operation, they would. Maybe it wouldn't be a big deal, but typically for like the life safety of one of these businesses, if you said. Hey, here's the four things, even if they're the tiniest things, we won't issue the business license for the new business until they fix all of them.
I was gonna say, I know my licensing, I don't, sometimes I have twenty eight days to fix something and then the other is I don't get the license. To even operate it without it being fixed.
And this is maybe a naive question on my part, but if we're requiring other businesses in town to do this, why aren't we requiring all businesses knowing there's cost for any business that has to. Or getting their their license.
Well, they're just doing the life safety ones through fire throwing, not through.
Well, Safe.
Unless Safe.
Safe build.
Safe build comes and does, I think the difference that we might, because initially I thought. We'll just do life safety, easy. It gets a lot more complicated since it's kind of this residential use.
Yeah.
And now they have to do all eight chapters of the IPMC in addition to what they would look for with the routine. Life safety, like talking to Safe Built sounds like they can't just do the same sort of life safety inspection as they would for a. Three hundred square foot. Animal supply store.
Do they inspect every business every year, Safe Built?
Only if it's a new use.
Only.
And so like in this case, we're issuing this new license.
Okay, all right, identified. We don't even require that once. For them to do Safe Build, we move that way, they wouldn't have to do it every year cuz then you get up the code and then you don't need to.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, but.
I like that.
But yeah, so the problem like issue with a lot of these spaces is like they might not have had a building inspector in for fifty years.
Right.
Maybe, you know, it's it's hard to say. And so like there's probably downtown businesses that haven't had a building inspector in in twenty years either, but they would have had them when they were starting out, I guess.
Yeah, I'm torn on this one.
I know, it's hard. No, but I mean, you made a point, it's a new license, so maybe it is time to do it. Where some of these hotels probably haven't had one since they built the hotel.
And I mean, having the information about Safe Built, like their time, I mean, how long they get people. Having more detail that they will help the conversation to.
Yeah, I mean, Safe Built. Has a plan in place if. But it's a plan that. I think even at the bare minimum, it could be just the seventy five dollars and real easy, but the second they start picking up on stuff. It's gonna be this like upward curve and. Maybe that's not something for us to worry about because ultimately if you wanna operate in this way. And even if you've been doing it kind of. Under the table for years. Like you've gotten away with it for ten years, so that doesn't mean you are gonna, now you have to fix it if you wanna continue to do it.
Well, and that was the whole reason this conversation started in the first place, right? Is they were. Entities were doing things they shouldn't be, shouldn't allow, but they were doing things that. Let's feel great, we shouldn't be doing, and so the conversation came up about how do we make sure that doesn't happen again? Well, then now if we get ten years down the road and. Some of the issues that we might not deem appropriate now actually becomes something quite important for a residential residential because they're living there for eight years instead of. Six months, I just, there's a lot of still what ifs hanging out. Now they brought up the ordinance of. And you thought about the fact that. They could live there indefinitely and so now if they don't have fire protection between the walls, it's actually a big thing. And that's why they inspect houses in that way, right? And so. I don't, it just, I don't wanna cause anybody any extra expense either, of course, right? But.
But they have to get compliant.
But they chose to run a business and yes, we're choosing, we're not really choosing to. We're choosing to change for them to require a change of that because of how things were running for some of them. I feel like I'm just stumbling over my words here.
I would, I would think that the, you know, when you think of the businesses that are doing this. I think they're doing it all in good faith anyway, so I would think if Safe Built has to come in and do an inspection, it shouldn't be that bad. It's the ones that didn't get folded into this. That we've allowed to still stay the same, which they should have come in and got a change of use. Are the ones that. Are probably the ones that would have the problem with Safe Built.
That definitely sounds like we need another conversation, obviously.
Yeah, but he's gotta start the licensing July first.
But if we do the fire.
It's, it sounds like we. Are on a good track for this year to like get the ball rolling, but long term, there's probably more work needed. So I guess, and I'll continue looking into like, does it make sense for Safe Built to do a long term? Have an inspector, should it be just extended stays, should we just do all lodging? Um. We can bring that part back. I think that or and. Ultimately, I suppose if. Um. Fire says or fire says or you know, Andy or someone say like, we need Safe Build in there, then. That'll probably be the direction anyway, but. It sounds like planning commission is at least somewhat comfortable with. Until we figure out some of these bigger question marks on the term, if it was just fire authority. That might be suitable for this year.
Can you change it in a year?
Yeah, it just says.
I mean.
Say your inspection.
I like, I don't think we could have something in place to do, like I think we need something in place unless we just say we're not instituting this. Until we have something else in place, like if we wanna have inspections started by July first, we need to just figure it out.
Yeah.
But if we wanted to change things or clarify then put strict things in by January first, we have time to be able to do that.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that. So you can move, where is everyone else comfortable with that right now?
Yeah, it sounds like it's really the only option and someone.
It does, I mean, otherwise we, all this work we've done goes.
Yeah, I mean, some inspection please.
Yeah, something so.
Well, unfortunately, fire will happen and we won't issue a license until fire is totally satisfied. We still may require the Safe Built inspection if ultimately that's what it comes down to, but. I'm happy to know that, you know, if you had said unquestionably we need it, then that's right, we're definitely requiring it, but if there is maybe a little bit of room, then maybe we'll. Continue to discuss it a little bit more internally before. Just, I guess. It becomes less important if we have Safe Build do it this year because. Now they've already inspected everything. You know, they, like once Safe Build has looked at everything and everyone has had to fix it, like next year you could.
That's really easy.
Right.
Now you're having a second guess.
I know, exactly.
I have a quick question. On short term rentals. We have to have a fire inspection annually and I think Safe Built every two years.
Yep.
Yeah, how is this different than? Than short term rental?
Well, we have that discussion internally and the difference is that the short term rental requires. The inspection to happen every three years, actually, but it's specifically written in the license that they have to have that's. Life safety inspection every three years. We did, we wrote annually for. Extended stay hotels. So we don't have a three year thing. It specifically says annual inspection.
For Safe Built and for Fire.
Well, it doesn't say, it's it's, it just says an annual inspection and it doesn't clarify, like if it said Safe Built and Fire. We wouldn't need to have this conversation and if it just said Fire, I think we wouldn't need to, but the fact that it was so. Raw and you kind of saying, well, we wanna protect ourselves from liability, we wanna achieve our goals, but. It's not clear, so maybe we need to clarify this with another ordinance or a modification of the ordinance.
So short term rental states, Safe Built and Fire.
Well, it says.
Or life safety and.
Fires every year and.
Well, Fire requires it every year just because Fire requires it. Um, so they require it regardless and Fire actually is not written in as like an annual thing into the ordinance, but Fire requires it every year for. Every business as well. What short term rental says is the property inspection is required prior to initial issuance and shall be conducted every three years thereafter, which is why we require. Safe Built to do the life safety every three years for short term rentals.
Okay, I think you make Safe Built do it, but you get an up two dollar amount for them for this first. For this year because they're gonna make money, more money off of. Whatever they're finding, so that could be horrible for the business owner, so if. That two hundred and forty can cover it for the whole.
Right.
Hotel and then sure, if there's some way whacked out compliant things, sure, it's gonna cost them money. But that's because they haven't been compliant and then after we go back to the fire authority.
But we'd say the inspection fee would be whatever maximum.
I don't know if Safe Built would do that. I would think maybe they would.
They they said at least the initial inspection fee would be the seventy five, but if they have to come back multiple days, then that's a new inspection fee. So if they were willing to say, well, we're not gonna charge more than X amount, but if they have to pull a building permit, now you're just paying the building permit fees.
And that's where that's your dime because that you own the building and yes, you have to get compliant. It's not, the licensing triggered them finding that problem, but. Inspection only costs you this.
And then they, then it has to be reinspected after it's fixed?
Yeah, as part of the building permit process, before they got CDO, they would have to have it inspected. With a building permit and then in the future going forward, we could say fire authority is fine because we have everything checked by Safe Built.
Yeah.
It's definitely the way that covers the bases the most. It'll perhaps cost more, but it's definitely the way to make sure that they're fully up to. Standard, so.
Also because of what you mentioned, the way that we grow this, um. Sounds to me that we might want to actually develop that checklist ourselves, just to have it as. A document that says this or you know. What we care, I mean, not for any specific reasons, they're just like bluffing out the the ordinance, I think.
Didn't Guy already do that all the?
That's from Salida, but we can just copy it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and Safe Built had put together like an initial, here's the things we think are most important. But also if we see anything else, we're going to regulate it, you know, so. Is it like, here's the big ticket items, I guess, but if we're walking past this thing and we notice a violation. We have to say it, you know, but if we don't notice, great, cuz we're not active, we're looking for this. Thing, you know, like what whatever cracks in the sidewalk or something. Um.
Okay, so so what do we get now? Cuz I got, cuz I thought there wasn't enough time, even if we want, there wasn't enough time to make Safe Build come out, maybe that's why.
Oh, they said, no, he said they would be willing to cooperate and get it done before.
Safe Built can. If, I mean, would, if there's no issues, they could easily be have it all done by July first. If there's any issues that come up, it's probably gonna be longer than that, but.
And if there is, then staff can make that, you know, compromise, Safe Built might say. Okay, we can extend it thirty days or something and you guys approve it. I mean. I don't know how long they give you to fix something. I'm sure there's certain things that.
Yeah, it gets, it might be a little more complicated since these are all being occupied, you know, they're like active hotels, I guess.
Ours are all gonna be out by May fifteenth, so it's a good time to get them moving on that one.
Right, but yeah, I guess like if you were.
Just as FYI.
Yeah, if you were like at the. Just thinking of like a hotel down there, let's say, and not to call anyone out, you know, but we'll just say like if you're at. Just six and forty, you know, like they might just be having transient guests in there. Coming and going, so like if there's a code violation. You'd have to say, well, is the code violation bad enough that you have to like? Red tag that room or building or whatever, but that would be a case by case basis, so.
I imagine they're used to that. Yeah, I guess that's part of their businesses coming in for both. Companies that are just opening, but also doing inspections when they're running, so.
Okay, so everyone comfortable with that for now?
Yeah, and I think the checklist, what I mentioned, I think that's something that we could create later on, it's not something we need to. Get have now, even maybe from the Safe Built inspections that we can learn and stuff that we wanna add or whatever.
Okay, perfect. Well, that's great. Thank you all for that.
That's a long topic.
Longer than I anticipated for sure. Maybe this next one can be quick, um.
Yes, we agree. Please.
So I put together this list because at the last meeting, you requested more information about. Amendment ideas for ADUs to encourage more, so I kind of fleshed all of the ideas that were in there last time out. So there's seven of them in there. I've more or less labeled them in order from what I think is maybe the easiest and cheapest to put in place. To things that will take a lot more work, so for example, one and two, expanding where an ADU is allowed to use by right. That would just be code amendment, pretty easy, same with removing the minimum floor area for. Um, tiny home development as ADUs, um, and just letting it be building code. That would be pretty easy, um, getting into, and I feel like those are things we could just. Do, you wouldn't need a deep restriction or anything for those. As you get into like relaxing setbacks. You know, in here, I said a proposal would be to perhaps reduce the rear setback from fifteen feet to five feet, so you have a little more room to work with for. For adding on structures, that's probably wouldn't have a huge impact. We allow. Um, sheds and the like to be that close to property lines. Obviously, this is a little different since people would be living in that building, but. Would be a pretty easy way to give people more leeway. Would be a pretty easy way to give people more leeway to build, um but then as you get into like. Four, which is potentially relaxing parking requirements, obviously that's a controversial topic, um. And then like fee waivers, that's when you talk about like deep restrictions and it being a lot more politically difficult. And then the last one, group standard ADU plans, that one's actually probably pretty easy, but it wasn't really a change, so I put it last. So I think my idea of this was, are there any that we think like, let's just. This seems great, let's move forward with it, do we wanna just continue fleshing out all of these? Hate some of these, you know, I think.
I thought this was done very well.
One to four, let's do this.
Yeah, you you could read it and the proposal and stuff, um. Which I thought the biggest one that would come up would be relaxing the parking, there would be conversation on that. The water tap fees.
Those would be a big discussion because historically council has and just generally the. Environment, you know, the the kind of feeling everywhere is like, you know. Way to fees and it's much more complicated and probably would require us to deep restrict and say this has to be a rental unit now. But. Would be in the future a good way of urging more development. But those one are definitely harder to create an ordinance around as well.
Right, because they'd have a meter. So they'd have their own building and stuff, um. But the enterprise fund also has to support itself and tap fees is part of that.
The one thing that I definitely think is kind of a. Not ideal in our code is that if I was to put in my basement an ADU, I wouldn't have to pay the tap fee because it's within the foundation.
Right.
But the second you're adding a new foundation, you would get charged a tap fee, so you're like, well, all right, then we're encouraging. Or it's like cheap to build a ADU inside your existing home and convert space, but it now you're paying an extra eighteen thousand dollars. If you wanna put it on a slab right next to your house.
Is that what our tap fees are now?
Well, water tap is something like twelve thousand, sewer is like six.
Has that gone up that much? Wow, good.
Yeah, they're they're kind of more expensive than a lot of places, but a lot of places do contemplate, like if you're an ADU, you. Your accessory, so you're probably generating less water, so we'll give you a reduction or something, here we give you a like a ten percent reduction. Per additional unit on your lot, so really you're still paying point nine of your water billing amount. Even if it's only.
Do other places give a reduction on that tap fee?
Yeah, the um.
Which I would think that would be more favorable.
I'm thinking of some metro districts up in Summit County, they 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 do based on, it's called E Q Rs, which are like equivalent. E Q Rs, water, it's like a equivalent. Equivalent residential unit, so like the Buffalo Mountain Metro District, which is like the wilderness area up near Silverstone. I know they were doing it at like, I don't know the amount, but they'd said like, if you're doing an ADU, it's like. Point seven of an E Q R, so instead of paying twelve thousand dollars for the water tap, you're paying. You know, uh nine thousand dollars or whatever, so it would be a slight reduction. Because the idea is it's an accessory unit, so it probably. Potentially uses slightly less water because it's smaller, it's. Definitely more complicated and maybe would be easier to do some of these like deep restriction based ones when we have a housing authority and stuff like that, that's really up and running, but. I wanted to add them on there because they are pools that a lot of places use.
Oh, and once we get these apartments built, how many people are gonna still wanna build an ADU?
Yeah, no, it's hard to say because I think like, if I have a nice little detached unit in the back. You feel like you have your own space versus living in an apartment. Like I think there is a market for these little mother in law suites for family, for my adult son, whatever, but. It's if we're spending a lot of money on it and then they, we only get like three of them built. That's probably not a good use of resources, whereas if we're just reducing the, like we're allowing them in more places and we're reducing the. Setbacks doesn't really cost us anything.
So what do you want on this?
Um, I think. I think there's a few ways this could go, you could say, I like. All the proposals that were kind of written into here, like let's keep working on all of them as proposed, or say like, let's just work on one, two. Three and seven, um and I can dig deeper into some than others and get feedback from council, I think it's.
I think like Gucci said, start on one through four, I don't know about the relaxed parking requirements, I think that should be more discussed.
Or maybe we're not ready to like have any ordinance language written, but I'll just like dig deeper into these and what it would actually look like and how many units maybe we. Could add and how much savings maybe there would be people, um I could put all that together for next meeting. And just focus on those one.
One through four? Yep, I'm good with that.
Um, I have some thoughts or seven, but I'll just email you.
Yeah, that sounds great, there's a lot of places that are doing like pre-approved things where you say, here's a link to the eight different.
I like that. You didn't like that?
No, yeah, no, I love it.
Oh, I liked it too.
I could draw them, but I don't know if that's a thing or not.
I think the, my hope would be that we would have it, have them drawn so that either A. Like we have a few companies, like Los Angeles does this, they have like twenty companies that they've. Re-vetted as like their license, they have plans that we've approved, if you hire them. They'll submit their plans, we'll immediately approve it, you're good to go. Another place like Summit County has it, they have these. Company in Buena Vista that they use and they're like, they're they're factory built and then they're brought to site, if you want the plans, they're free. You can just kind of, they'll build it for you at the factory, they'll just set it on the site and we'll. Leave that everything, so you don't have to go through the building process, you don't have to pay for architectural drawings, you save. You know, ten thousand dollars in architectural drawings right there, other places just say. Hey, we have, we had someone draw the set of plans. Like, you know, Gucci, if you wanted to, we then pass it through safe built. And safe built would say, yeah, if you build it according to these plans, it meets our code. And then we just have them available for anyone who wanted them, so there's a few ways we could do it.
I mean, let's do whatever's easier, it sounds like having companies already could ship things, it's be straightforward.
I I can definitely look into it, that one more as well, cause I can kind of present like, here's the three models.
Well, I didn't really have a problem with any of them, I mean, if you wanna work on all of them and and then. What do you mean by work on them? Investigate more and add more detail to it? They're building on ordinance and. Yeah.
I could do it either way, I think certainly before we like. Have an ordinance in front of council for review, we'll probably wanna do a work session with them, so if we had someone like, we want. Here's our top priorities, here's our lower priorities, council, what do you wanna do? Then I could do it that way as well.
Doesn't come back to us by then.
Right, so the direction could be, let's focus on one, two, four and number seven, and then five and six are good, but. They're more complicated.
But is it after we get the first one done, kind of thing?
Yeah, and then if council said, actually, let's waive all the fees, then I'm happy to change tact, but. I have a feeling that those will be less politically palatable.
Yeah.
But that's more.
I feel like your one, two, three are pretty straightforward, four, I agree that. I would like to have a little more conversation about it, um and also more information about seven. And then the other ones, as soon as we can get them done, or the authority. Can help with that then.
Okay, well, we, I guess we can talk about potentially putting some language together for those first few and then. For everything else, just get a lot more detail on.
And I would say on relaxing the building fees and stuff, I would get some. I mean, but it's Andy's thought on stuff like that, because some of this stuff. The costs are to pay the administrative fees that that you do and all that stuff, some of the costs are to cover. The expenses for the city.
Yeah, and I think where people have done that before, it gets more complicated when you have like safe built and engineers who are not in office. Because I think it's easy for a city or municipality to say. If it's an ADU, our staff will work for free, but when we have to pay.
Right.
All these other companies to review it, then we're basically actually costing. Money on top of the staff time that we're waiving, so it's.
I'm paying for it then.
Yeah, and I mean, I guess like taxpayers are paying for my salary either way, but. If you're saying, well, we're also getting housing out of it, it's more palatable than saying, well, we're gonna still pay safe bill, you know, the two thousand dollar permit fee. But we're also not, it it.
Just, I I like the way you're saying it, cause that's exactly the way it works, you know, having done city stuff all before, all those years, um. I would think you could move forward with that one then too, because it is that, it's gotta cover the cost when you have to hire those outside engineers or. Do this or that, um but if it's something that can be done in-house.
Yeah.
I mean, that can be written into it, that when it's costs, if you gotta have an engineer, then it's at the cost of.
Right.
The permitting. That if it's a simple thing, then. Is he saying that?
Well, I I have a good direction here.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely took longer on the first topic than I was anticipating, but um I think definitely have good good directions, so thanks for bearing. With with this on all that.
Cool.
I have more, I'm just.